Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, Sidney?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Gary Bravetto?
Here.
Bob Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Harvey?
Here.
Ken Matthews?
Here.
Noel Sawyer?
Here.
John Schaefer. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on if everybody will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start this evening with recognition of Chief Larson. David?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me say that your staff is a bit informally dressed this evening. We're in the throes of preparing for a minor event that's going to occur tomorrow, so we're doing some promotionals as well as doing the dress-up thing as well. This evening, we want to honor a long time, the longest time employee of the City of Woodland Park, Chief Bob Larson. On September 1st, 1979, city manager Kirk Relford made a very smart decision by hiring Officer Bob Larson. Bob has spent a lifetime serving his country and his communities in law enforcement. He served as a military policeman in the U.S. Army. He was an officer in Green Mountain Falls, and then again, he was hired here in the City of Woodland Park as a young police officer. He's risen through the ranks, sergeant, deputy chief, chief over the years. Bob has been more than a police chief to me, he's been a trusted advisor. He's helped me negotiate the treacherous waters of things such as officer-involved shootings. During the Waldo Canyon fire, his advice to me, his calm demeanor to the community, set the example for how a police chief should help a community move through very serious and troubling times. He cares for this community, deeply he cares for this community. He is a professional, training and leading other professionals. If you look around the room, council, you will see his team here. You'll not only see his team here, you'll see his team's families here. The Woodland Park Police Department is a very tight family. They support each other through thick and thin, and they've seen both sides of that, thick and thin. This evening, I'd also like to recognize other law enforcement professionals in the room. Teller County Sheriff Mike Enslinger is here this evening with his wife Maria, and former Woodland Park Police Chief Mike Rulo is here as well. Mike has asked to say a few words after the mayor and I present the largest plaque in Woodland Park history to Chief Bob Larson. Mayor, if you'll join me, please. Bob? Chris, would you join us, please?
Uh-uh.
Of course, for 35 years as the, as a police officer with the City of Woodland Park, standing next to Bob through all of this is Chris. So, please, Bob, come up here. Mayor? If you would, if you'd help me with this, so this is a photo opportunity, Chris, pose in a little bit here.
Smile.
Who's she talking to?
I'm going to ask the sheriff if he'll be able to dais if that's okay. City man?
Absolutely. Mayor? Mayor Levy and city council? You know, that's pretty cool just to be able to say Mayor Levy.
It's pretty cool to have you here on the first meeting.
It's, it's an honor, sir. It really is. And old friend. This is about honoring old friends. I hate to trump you guys and the citizens of Woodland Park, but Bob and Chris have been my dear friends for almost 40 years. And Bob's been a friend, mentor, brother. We've been each other's bosses. We've been each other's subordinates. You know, we've cared for one another in difficult times. We've assisted each other in dealing with some very difficult crises in law enforcement here in Woodland Park. Bob and I started in the Army, and I was proud to serve next to Bob as a military policeman. We served together in Green Mountain Falls. We served together for almost 20 years in Woodland Park. On behalf of my team at the Cripple Creek Police Department, I'd like to give Bob a much tinier plaque. Appropriately so, because the city administrator said, "Make it small, Mike, and where the speech is concerned, make it short." Bob, if you'd step up. It's okay, I'm not trying to show up the sheriff either, because Mike promised he'd give you a four-by-four campaign sign for your front yard. Go Sheriff Enslinger. And many bumper stickers as well for all your photo cards. Chief Robert Larson, leader, teacher, friend and brother. In recognition of your 35 years of dedicated service to the City of Woodland Park and the citizens of Teller County, we thank you, the staff at the Cripple Creek Police Department. Thank you.
I can trump them all. I've known Bob since 1956. We just didn't know each other's name at that time. We also have a plaque for you, Bob, but our engraver is not as efficient as the one that Mike leaves, so we do have one coming for you. What an inspiration Bob has been to, to law enforcement in Teller County. Judge Colt said not too long ago that he feels we have a tremendous law enforcement presence in Teller County. And in my opinion, it starts right here in Woodland Park. You guys are so lucky to have a man of this caliber, a mentor to all of us, a friend, and someone you can just call at 3:00 in the morning and ask a simple question on CRS. You right, right, Bob? So, we will be presenting you your plaque, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief, would you like to make some comments?
I just wanted to thank everyone for their kind words, and I appreciate you coming to this event. Thank you very much, all of you. I really appreciate it.
The last word I would say is that you've heard glowing accolades, and it's true. And again, I just want to point out to you in the audience, all the family members that are here to support their chief of police, and our citizens in this small mountain town are extremely fortunate to have Bob Larson as not only a police officer, but as the chief and as a leader. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Bob. Congratulations. Thank you. I'll just say this, I've known Bob and Chris kind of on the, on the private side because they frequent my restaurant, and I've had the opportunity to wait on them for a number of years. And as you can imagine, I'm not telling anybody anything they don't already know. Couldn't be nicer, couldn't be greater to work with and to wait on. And they treat our busboys and our dishwashers as well as the owner as the same. So, really appreciate those kind of people in our community, so once again, thanks to Bob and Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the appointment of the DDA board. Cindy?
Thank you. There is currently one term on the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors that is vacant. That term of office for the position will expire June 30th of 2017. Pursuant to your policy, we followed and provided a notice of the open positions on the city's website, city's Facebook page, Cable Channel 10, and the Courier View. We have received three applications by the deadline of August 15th. Copies were forwarded to you via email. All three applicants are invited and are in attendance this evening. The applicants are April Babin, David Bramwell, and John DeVeaux. They're here for an interview with you to answer any questions that you have. Our city charter says that for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, we vote with paper ballots. The paper ballots have your name on them. They are voted, collected, counted, and read into the record. Typically, we go in alphabetical order, however, that decision is yours, so what questions may I answer for you?
Council, do you think we should go the way we always go? Alphabetical order? Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
I would also ask if we should ask each of the applicants to go to the room of the cone of silence while we interview each of the candidates?
And that certainly is a council decision. It's your prerogative.
I would agree with that.
Do that then.
Right.
Sounds good.
So who will go first?
April Babin.
Okay. So Mr. Bramwell and John?
And Mr. DeVeaux can go into the planning office.
Hello, April.
Hello.
If you'll state your name and your address.
My name is April Babin. I live at 1276 Terry Lane in Woodland Park.
Okay. We'll let you start.
Okay.
Do they have a copy of your application materials if there's anything you'd like to highlight on it or anything you'd like to talk about?
There's nothing I would like to specifically highlight on, other than I would like an opportunity to serve on this board, to get to know more about this town, what's involved. I have attended several of the last meetings that have been in the last couple of months. I've been learning more about the board and its role and what it plays in, and I would like to participate in that to help the community, the businesses, and the city, as it is part of where I live, and I own a business here, and I feel that as a business owner and as a citizen, that this would be something that I would like to participate and be a member of, and see what kind of movements we could do all together as a team.
Great. Council, questions? Ken?
Well, I guess I would have to, given that we've discussed this in recent meetings, are you comfortable with the discussions on the parking lot issue that I know you're deeply involved in, and how that's evolving?
Yes, because it's a community effort, and it's a community thing, and whatever the decision is that needs to be made is fine with me. That's a decision that, you know, you have to make sometimes, and you gotta kind of go with the flow.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. April, do you know, who's done any of this? Do you know why we have a DDA? Why it was created?
To be honest with you, no, I don't. And I'll be honest with that, I'm not sure, can I assume? Yes. To have a board that is specifically designated to help with downtown development and with the authority of that, and to make it so that it's not stressful on all the other committees. And so to break it down so that they can bring the information to you guys and say, "Hey, this is what we're presenting. We'd like to," you know, you guys can't do it all.
Do you know what tax incremental financing is?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Might pull that microphone a little closer to you if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead, Bob. As a current renter and potentially a future owner on, along the Main Street, historic part of the Main Street, do you see that your participation in the board would, would benefit not only the Main Street plus the development of the Saddle Club property? Are you looking to work out fair solutions that would, for everybody? What's your views on that particular issue?
Yes. My view on that would be to help the downtown area. It's not about me, and it's not about my personal issues or whatever. It's working with everybody, and it's making something that might need some assistance better. It's helping it to grow as a whole, not as a single unit.
Are you familiar with the Main Street program?
A little bit, yes, I am familiar with that.
Is the Main Street valued to a certain extent?
Actually, the Main Street, I do feel, is extremely valuable. What is downtown and what goes on with events and making the town something special where people want to come visit and bring income in to the businesses, I think is very important.
Anybody else?
No, the only question I had is what was your understanding of tax increment financing, which is a very important financing mechanism that is at the disposal of the DDA? But if you don't know about it, then there's no use in asking you about it.
And I don't know, but I am absolutely willing to learn and get some knowledge on that.
Go ahead, Gary. How would you, how would you go about revitalizing the downtown area? Or what ideas might you have to create a revitalization of?
I have lots of ideas, but we're not going to be here all night. So, just one in particular is the businesses downtown. Each individual business definitely needs support and help, and one of the things that I would try to do is definitely help build each individual business, but using other businesses to partner with and to build on each other so that there's no money out of pocket for each other, but they're supporting each other. And it just makes the town bigger and grow bigger and more supportive so that there's a deep foundation there for each other.
Anyone else? April, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Lisa, if you would mind taking April into the plan conference room and ask Mr. Bramwell to join us? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
I'm fine.
Good. If you'll just give us your name and address to start, please?
My name is David Bramwell. My address is 2000 Arapahoe Trail, Woodland Park.
Great. We appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
We'll give you an opportunity to say a few words first if you'd like to.
Well, I would say probably my main interest in, in being on the Downtown Development Authority is growth. I've lived in small towns, American cities across the country, and I've seen growth go crazy in, in a bad way, and sometimes it's held back, and that is a mistake also. I would say one of the main things that I'm interested in, I'm very, very pro-business, and as business grows, so grows the community. And I would just like to be a part of anything I can do to help it grow, and as the city manager mentioned, this is a small mountain town. Let's create an identity for it. It just, it seems to me like the identity of the city is kind of going in different directions. It could be something like that that could be a wonderful thing for us. I see a lot of traffic every day, and especially on Fridays and the weekends, of traffic going completely through here. Why not do something to create a business structure or something that Woodland Park can hang its hat on to draw people in, rather than having people go to the Springs or Cripple Creek?
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Carol?
David, how do you feel about a bypass?
Traffic-wise, I'm sure it would be a pretty good thing, but from a standpoint of the city, I think it'd be a killer. I think it would absolutely destroy the city. It's not something that you couldn't rebuild from, but it would take a long time. I think it really would.
Okay, thanks.
Now, do you know, do you know why the DDA was formed in the first place?
Yes. DDAs were formed in early 2000s, I recall, and it was mainly because there's been growth on the outer edges of town, and the downtown areas have been left pretty much on their own, and downtowns tend to crumble within when that happens, and it was a certain thing to help the downtown area expand and grow and help the city grow along with it.
Are you familiar with tax incremental financing?
Yes, to a certain degree, yeah.
And what does that do for us?
Well, it's a, it's an incentive for businesses to, to come into the downtown area. Yes, ma'am?
Primarily, though, it seems to benefit those that would be starting from scratch in a sense, like in the Saddle Club property, where you have a very low base, and then you can use that incremental funding to pay for the infrastructure, the structure building stuff. So that throws open the, you know, somewhat of a differentiation between new businesses and existing businesses, and you are an existing business owner.
Yes.
How do you see bridging the gap there between those two, two communities that would, from the benefits of TIF? How do you see that as, as working to benefit all?
Well, I think that most existing businesses are very much in favor of incentives for new businesses to grow, because that helps everyone. It's, it's not something that's given to a business just for that business alone, and for it to grow within itself only, it's to spread out. And as, as small businesses grow, the businesses that are next door to it and alongside, and everyone benefits from it.
Any other questions? Gary?
How would you revitalize the downtown area? How would you encourage businesses coming into this particular area?
Personally, I really like the idea of a small, mountain, western community, and the more we can move in that direction, this is not to say that I'm anti-art, because I'm not in any way, shape, or form, but in the downtown area, there is a certain identity that we want to project. I've done some reading recently about the former rodeo grounds that used to be there. I wish it was still there. I think that was a, could have been a great benefit to the community. It'd be a big draw for people going through, a reason to stop, a reason to see this. Here again, identity. I really like that. I like the western identity. I like the, the small town, the mountain town, the more we can, and we've got a lot of that, but I think it should go more in that direction.
Are you currently involved in the DDA?
No.
Have you been in the last 10 years?
No. In Woodland Park?
No, just in general.
Gosh. I worked in business development in Orange County, California. Oh, gosh, it's been close to 10 years. Probably 2006 and '07 and '08, right in that period of time.
And are you, the DDA is really about growth?
Yes.
And you are pro-growth?
Absolutely.
Okay. What is the identity you think Woodland Park should have?
I like the, the mountain, western community. I don't believe that we are Wrecken Ridge, or Vail, or Beaver Creek. I think Woodland Park can create its own identity, very, very much the western type thing. That's what I was talking about as far as the, the rodeo grounds. I think something like that, if you can develop that with grandstands and all of the things that can come from that, that could be a tremendous thing. Takes money, I know. But that's the direction that I like. That's a personal thing, now.
Anybody else? I've got a question for you. What are your thoughts on developments like perhaps an aquatic project that would be located in the DDA that would not provide any TIF?
Would not, would not provide any TIF? Honestly, I don't know. I would have to do more study on that. I'm just not familiar enough to speak intelligently on something like that. I know that there is, there are plans for it, and has there been a study on how that would affect the growth of the community?
I don't believe there has been.
Takes money, I know. But that's the direction that I like. That's a personal thing, now.
Anybody else? I've got a question for you. What are your thoughts on developments like perhaps an aquatic project that would be located in the DDA that would not provide any TIF?
Would not provide any TIF? Honestly, I don't know. I would have to do more study on that. I'm just not familiar enough to speak intelligently on something like that. I know that there are plans for it, and has there been a study on how that would affect the growth of the community?
I don't believe there has been. I'm not sure of that.
Well, you're talking about several million dollars, correct?
About 10.
I would assume, anyway. A lot of money, in other words. And I would think before, the city would want to expend a large sum of money like that, they would want to know how it's going to affect growth.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here, Mr. Bramwell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone of you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Guest Number Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Give us your name and your address, please.
John DeVoe, 940 East Kelly's Road, Woodland Park. Consul, staff, law enforcement. They all left. Don't feel as safe now. Chief's still here. Interesting observation. This is the west, because two or three of those guys up there had cowboy boots on. They really did, dressed cowboy boots, they had dressed cowboy boots on. I've taken a two-year respite off of DDA. I was on it when we formed it, dropped off in 2012, and here I am again. The DDA, when we formed this back in 2001, I believe, 2000, we started meeting at the Eagle Fire to see if there was enough of an interest to do that. And that was under Mark Fitzgerald, Joe Napoleon back at that time. We then put together, a slate, we got together, we formed the district, we had elections, got on that. We had no money when we started. DDA works off of TIF. Well, when you first start, there is no TIF. And if there's no growth, there's still no TIF, because it doesn't work that way. I mean, I remember Ralph Holloway would print the newsletter, and somebody would donate paper, somebody would donate a couple printer cartridges, and off we'd go doing that, back at that point in time. It's been interesting to watch this because we have, we've gone through an evolution with that. When we had no budget, in fact, I think the city gave us $2,000 for postings and stamps or something like that when we started doing that. This year, the budget is 360-some thousand dollars. And 250,000 or somewhere in that area goes back to paying for the Saddle Club property and those different loans. That investment has generated today over $30 million in new assets in our community. I mean, from the, $18 million just for Trail Ridge, $3 million for the how-to store, $3 million for the other, all this stuff together, you add it up, it's $30 million, and it's going to get bigger than that. And the benefit is going to be not for us here, not for any of us that will be around. But when that expires 20-some years ago from now, there'll be a windfall of sales, of property tax in this community that anybody that is running for any office at that point will have far more money than they got to work with right now. There will be a huge influx in doing that. When that DDA was formed, we could have had a sales tax and a mill levy. We chose not to do that. We just do it out of TIF, Tax Incremental Financing. And that's how we've grown to where it is today. Downtown is the heart and soul of a community. So many of them are forgotten. As the malls get built, as all of that happens in a community, we have an economic development group here with Brian Fearfleer running that. But we can't let, we can't let that go away. We have to simply work with that. And in the two years I've been off, I'm now downtown, I've been down there for eight months now, and when you had the last council meeting, the candidates that were here for mayor that weren't involved with the community, a potty stop. Well, I have 200 people a day on weekends coming through my store. The majority of them out of state are from Kansas, and then Texas, and then Oklahoma. They all get out of the heat. They come up here. We have day trippers. People come up here, especially with their families during the summertime, and they walk up and down Main Street. And they go to all the different places, things we take for granted. They just want to get out of Dodge for a day. And they come to our community up here. When I wasn't downtown, I was always saying, what do we got downtown to go to? We got a lot more than most people realize. And as this place grows, and as we get more on the periphery of growing, of different businesses and that come in, we have to look at that. We have to try to preserve that, because there are a lot of small folks down there with not a lot of money trying to make that thing work. And one of the things that I envisioned for the DDA and this program is that all of you people up here are doing something. John, you're involved with Habitat for Humanity. You're working on that after a career in business. We have a soccer coach from the high school over there with a lot of computer talent. And Ken, you've come back in again. You've come out of retirement, and you've come back to the council again. Bob, what a great job you're doing, working with the, pushing the money for the swimming pool and that project going. I've watched Gary Bravado walk up and down Main Street with trying to get the Main Street program going more than once, stopping in businesses and doing that. Carol, you're keeping our country safe, and that's okay. You need to keep doing that. Thank you for your service for doing that, Peterson. And Neil, just don't let the food go down. I'm doing that, okay. You've really done a good job of that. But we need to, the big businesses that come into town, whether it be a tractor supply or a Walmart or whatever, they don't need our help. What they need is to abide by our rules, okay? The conditions we've got for our standards of what you have to build when you come and park. The person that needs the problem is the little person that comes in. They don't know about our rules and regulations. And a coordination between economic development, you guys on the council, the DDA, planning department, all that together, need to help those people. And we need to communicate more with each other of doing that. And we, as a group downtown, need to work better with each other and not get our nose bent out of shape when things don't go the way you want them to. We need to make that a viable place that people want to come to and they want to come back to. We're going to have an event tomorrow that's going to have traffic and snarls for a long time. That's fine. But those people may not come in my place, but they'll see it, and they may come back. And that's the overall look of all this, of what we're trying to accomplish, to do that tomorrow. It's probably taken more time off the city, and everybody is kind of pressed to the limit of doing that. But I think Dave Betterby told me last year, or last time we did it, 5,000 people for a minute 23 seconds. Well, it's going to last a little longer than a minute 23 seconds this time. When we put in over 14 years ago, all that parking in the downtown, that kind of replaced what was on-street parking when we did the downtown program down there, that's been the best thing that's happened to us. We need more of it. Because that's that in parking a lot around our mall, and that's really who we're competing against. We need to do, that's the best deal going for the stakeholders down there, because the city plows it, the city maintains it, the city stripes it, okay? And then the city hears a lot of complaints about it. So they get the full circle when that takes place. We encourage that. I hope they park in our place. I don't care if they leave the car there all day, because I want them going to see the Cowhand, or I want them to go over to Brenda's Boutique, and I want them to stop in at Jan's, or go get a wash and set over at April's Place. We want that, and we need to work together as people within the business community to make that happen as well. The street crossing down there, Dave and I have had conversation about that. You take your life in your own hands to get on the other side of the street, and we need to figure out a way to slow it down and do something there. And I know he's working with C.D.A. to get that done.
John, give us a chance to ask you a couple of questions, too.
Okay. I plan on being here as long as you want me to, sir. Okay. Isn't that good? I'm right at the end. Street crossing was the last one. Okay. I'm open for questions.
Ken?
Well, John, we've known each other for quite a while, and I'd just, first of all, like to thank you and compliment you in all your involvement in the city, in all the different committees and things you've done, at council and DDA and everything.
Thank you.
People like you that we need.
But you're looking in the mirror, okay?
The only question I have, I guess, since you moved, I think you said it was eight months, from where you were to downtown, I'm just curious how you see the difference between there and-
Our business tripled.
Pardon me?
Our business tripled.
Wow, really?
Tripled. We average right around 100 people a day in the wintertime, 150 to 200 people a day every, in the summer. And of course, the biggest part is between when the kids are out and when the kids go back in that area. But to tell me downtown is dead, baloney. We just need to get it on the map more, and hopefully the Main Street program will do that.
If you can get that many people down there, hopefully they'll also dribble over into the other businesses.
Well, and that's what we do. And that's what I'm talking about, getting together. If I want a guy that wants to look at a gun, and he drags mama along to do that, or it happens the other way as well, I want him going to Brenda's Boutique, so I want him going to Cowbell's, I want him going to Jan's, I want him to go up and see Mary Jo up at the Cowhand. And we push that, to do that. Can I leave my car there? You bet you leave your car there. Go where you want to go. Because we've got to be able to do things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Gary.
In order to be consistent, I've asked this question to the other candidates, and I think you probably know the answer to it. What was the reason for establishing the DDA in the first place?
A way to generate business for the downtown and preserve the downtown. At the time our DDA was formed, there were only seven in the state of Colorado. Incrested Butte was just coming online. And we got together, and we went to Greeley, we went to Fort Collins, we went to Denver, and we looked at all those ones to get an idea of what they were doing. It was just kind of like trying to present. It was Mark Fitzgerald, when he was the city manager here, was back when he came from, I think it was Burlington, Wisconsin. He was also, they did it differently back there. The city council was the DDA, and Mark was the city manager, and he also ran the DDA. And that's where he got the concept and had a bunch of exploratory meetings. This was tried in 1984. If you go back and look at the documents that the downtown merchants tried to do back at that time, what happened was, there was no funding. Everybody had the same ideas that we had when we did this in 2001, except there was going to be a funding source. And without the money, you've got nothing to work with. And that was the main change. But the same people that, the Mountain National Banks and all the different places around here that wanted to have that take place, did it without any kind of funding. And it's just, it has turned into be, if the mistake was made at the beginning, it was made because we were just awful naive about what a DDA was supposed to be. We gave developers too long a time to make a decision to do something. And what happened was, the economy changed, everything went down, the stock market went down, property values went down, and there was just no recovery. And we gave the developer way too many years to put his program together. And, you know, it's the Allee education, which is the most poignant, but it's the most expensive one as well. And we've kind of gotten, that's a long-winded answer for what you wanted.
TIF is, tax incremental financing is something that's not well-understood by the community. I think there's a perception out there that we're giving money away as an incentive for businesses. Do you have any insight to about tax incremental finance and what it really does for us?
What takes place is after we formed the Downtown Development Authority. What took place was, you take an assessment of all the properties that are within the Downtown Development Authority, okay? And that property becomes a base level, okay? If nothing takes place, there's no growth in the community. The normal taxes that go up with the reassessment of the county, that's the only thing that takes place. If nothing happens, there is no income to do that. And so what, as I say, we could have added a sales tax, we could have added, we didn't do that. When a property changes hands, one of the things we had that was fairly lucky was that when the Lutheran Church came out of there and the dinosaur museum went in, we were bidding against Manitou Springs for that project. They were moving from North Dakota. And we came up with $225,000 of not cash upfront, but of tax abatement over a 10-year period, okay? And that got that business to come to town. And that, and once that's paid off, then the normal taxes that are coming in is revenue to us to do that. And every project's got to stand on its own merit to do that. And when they're non, like the Saddle Club, and there's pluses and minuses about that. But even if the Saddle Club stayed there and developed that, remember, at the time that took place, the Saddle Club, the grandstands were condemned, they couldn't be used, they were out of money, they had no money, okay? And when we put that together, we took out 11 acres or nine acres, whatever is of a tax-exempt property, and we've turned it into a taxable property to do that. And that has generated, like I say, $300,000 a year since 2002. There's a few dollars to work with now. But again, it's generated, $18 million for Trail Ridge to do that. One of the corrections we made for doing that was that the ambulance department in Taylor County, and fire department, they don't get any revenue, they don't get anything. So we made a change at that time to exempt them from that so that they would have, that income would continue on. Only when we go outside of the DDA area and we expand to different places, because they need their funding to be able to do what they've got to do.
John, I've got a question for you. Clearly, you've had a lot of experience, very knowledgeable. Some might say that you're a retread, if you will. You care about your community, you want to contribute, and everybody loves that. I would like to see new faces, more people involved in the DDA and what our community does. What are your thoughts on that?
I've also heard the term used "old guard." Right now, I'd like to see a little more old guard on the federal level, just maybe. Remember, the DDA has to have people that are stakeholders downtown. One of the differences between, in the way a DDA is formed compared to, for example, the way the parking was done and the agreements that the city did with that, they just did that with property owners. Remember, when you voted the DDA district, everybody that had a business there got a vote, and every property owner got a vote, because they're all stakeholders in it. It doesn't do any good if you have, if you can't generate money for, the business has got to be profitable. They've got to open up, and they've got to be successful, and they have to make money. Because if they don't, then the landlord, you know, feels through that. New people, yes, but they understand, they've got to be in the DDA area, and they've got to be a businessperson that comes forward to do that. You've had some changes on it. I mean, if I go back to the original DDA, and I mean, we're talking Scott Downs, we're talking Gary Crane, we're talking Jim Ignatius, we're talking Will Brown, that's all changed. Those were the original people, and there were more of us back then, and then we shrank down to, I think there were, what, 12 or 15 of us when we first started that up. But new faces, you bet. But we need people that are businesspeople, that are stakeholders, not absentee landlords that'll come down and help make that downtown work together. You don't have to, you can still be gray on top and have a lot of energy inside. Touche.
Bob?
I'll give you that. A lot of energy. I have asked the question of the other two candidates, too, about perception of unfairness. We've had the problem with Gold Hill wanting to try to influence the DDA to hold off on- on development, or at least not rob tenants from Gold Hill. Do you see any perception of unfairness between existing businesses and bringing in new businesses? Do you see a way of keeping them all treated fairly or equally and to try to mitigate that kind of thinking?
We're not developing them all. We can't control who comes to this community. If another gun shop wants to come in, if another restaurant wants to come in, I mean, that's America. Let it, let it happen. But at the same time, there are no incentives in Woodland Park. The taxpayers have turned that down every time. The only incentive's going is in the Downtown Development Authority. They're the only ones that have the ability to do that. Okay? Because the vote is done within the DDA, not within the city. It isn't all the people get to vote on that that are citizens of Woodland Park. Just the people with, within that group get to do it. Five tax entities had to sign off on that in 2001. School system, they all had to sign off on that, to, to make this a better place for doing it. Everybody, the landowners, such as what you were talking about with Gold Hill North and South, they have to be competitive. And I went to the DDA meeting and spoke at that when that took place. If you want to have people that stay in your place, you have to have a competitive lease rate, you have to have the place in nice shape, and you have to help attract more people to come down. And that's our job. That's the DDA's job, that's the city's job, that's economic development's job, that's planning department's job to do that. But what I don't want to, it's easy to cry wolf. If your business, one of the things that happened when we first got involved with the DDA, a bad business cannot be made better by giving them money from the DDA. It just doesn't work. If you've got bad habits and bad ways of, of, of running your business and it's not doing well, putting more capital into it isn't going to make it any better. We've seen that in government. Okay? Doing some, things like that. In other words, you got to, if, if you want to make your place more attractive and you're, you're, you own the property and you're renting it out, then you're going to have to have attractive rent rates and you're going to have to have a nice place and parking for your people.
Anybody else?
Do that. It doesn't work.
John?
You've given many years of service to the community, John, and I admire you for that. Now, you own a booming business, you manage it, you're present chairman of the Planning Commission. How on earth are you going to find the time to sit on the DDA board?
The same way you do, John. Habitat for Humanity, never had any problems?
No.
Oh, yes, John. The ADUs that you passed, and we got accessory dwelling units, and you came to how many Planning Commission meetings and did that? You found the time, too. The beauty of the DDA for the first two years, we met every week for two years, every Tuesday morning. Since nobody knew much about us, the press never showed up. Sorry. You come now. Okay, but you did the DDA back then. So we could talk about things that, we, we got up, we had meetings 7:30 every morning. They still meet at 7:30 in the morning to do that.
Anybody else?
If I run out of energy, it's just because I got too darn old and I don't want to do that yet.
Now, I just want to thank John for reminding me of the phrase "wash and set." Hadn't heard that in a long time.
John, thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
John, just have a seat in the audience.
Okay.
I'll read the results into the record. Mayor Levy votes for Devoe. Councilmember Brevetto votes for Devoe. Excuse me. Mayor Protem Harvey votes for Devoe. Councilmember Carlson votes for Devoe. Councilmember Matthews votes for Devoe. Councilmember Sawyer votes for Devoe. And Councilmember Schaefer votes for Devoe. And Cindy is prepared to swear him in this evening.
Okay, would you, step forward.
Want to make some comments?
Sure.
Yeah. I think the, the argument, you know, for new blood versus old workhorse, can I call you that, John? It weighed on us. But at this critical juncture right now, I, I think it's very important that we have somebody with, with that tremendous knowledge. Our other two candidates, thank you for stepping forward. Maybe the next vacancy, but learn a little bit more about TIF, learn about, learn more about the DDA so that you can be up and running and ready to go as, as soon as, you know, should you be then selected. Thank you for participating tonight.
Yeah, I, too, would like to thank April and David for being here and for putting their name in and, and look forward to seeing you again. Trust me, I've been in your position more than once. And just keep fighting. How bad you want to be part of this community will determine whether you'll be back with us again. So consider that and, and keep contributing as you have. It's very much appreciated.
Mr. Devoe, would you like to step forward? Congratulations, sir.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Repeat after me.
I, John Devoe.
I, John Devoe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of board member.
The duties of the officer, office of board member.
For the Downtown Development Authority.
Downtown Development Authority.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. So you, so you know, now, I'm going to tell her about this. It's got my name on it already. But she called me today as one of the applicants and said she had to repair, she prepared these for all three. Okay, so this was not a boiler room situation. This, there was two of these that she didn't have to use. I know, shut up and sign it. I know you didn't.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Try to do a good job for you.
Okay, let's move on. Consent calendar?
No, sir, we have one more item under four.
Excuse me.
Presentations for C.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just, I would have encouraged it to Dave and April over here. Main Street program is a really important program and they're really closely tied with DDA. And I would highly encourage you, see Brian over there and get on Main Street because, I'll tell you, they're so interlinked and so tied together that I think you'd be a tremendous asset to those committees. And we're forming the standing committees now to press on with our work that we've got to do. So please, you know, don't leave us.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, we'll move on to the Fountain Creek Project Review. Bill?
Mr. Mayor, welcome, members of council. Kip and I have a short presentation for you here to kind of bring you up to speed on some things that have occurred in Fountain Creek and some of the progress we've made on the projects that some of you have been aware of. And some of this may be new for some of you and some it may be a review. We'll try to curb our enthusiasm because this kind of stuff gets us excited, just like paving streets. But Kip and I'll team this up. And let's just get a little bit of background here. Back in the late 90s, David and others started a process to make improvements to Fountain Creek. And we've got a couple of before and after shots here of Fountain Creek just upstream of Sheridan Avenue. And this is the before with erosion and after, you know, a very nice meandering channel that over time, that was designed in 98, 99, constructed, has proved to be a great amenity to our community there in Cavalier Park and maintenance-free. I also have another slide there of that same shot taken last year on the 22nd August, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that, the rainstorm event that we had. And as you can see, that channel was flowing full and full of water. And we've got some, some more stuff to show you on that. Continuing, just a little bit of background, that's Cavalier Park before and after. So we've recognized there's been some issues in Fountain Creek for a long time. And we've been diligently working on them as time and funds allow. This is downstream of Sheridan Avenue, before and after. And those shots are lined up, the arrow points to the little shed there. And keep that shed in mind because we even have some more. But this shot down here, you know, that's after the improvements in 99. That was the box culvert that discharged into Fountain Creek into the Rosemont section behind where the Trail Ridge Apartments are now. This is a little further up, this is near Bob Bartlett's property there on Pike's Peak, that channel, as you can see, the vegetation growing in there, great design. It's been stable, it's conveying the waters like it should, and that's what we want to see, a nice, stable channel that conveys the stormwater and stays in place. This was our most recent challenge. This is downstream of Sheridan Avenue. This is looking the other way from that, there's that same box culvert outlet, and if you just turn around, that's what it looked like. And for years, we looked at that and said, what are we going to do? As you can see, it was entrenching significantly. We had water, sewer line infrastructure in there that was at risk, and it continued to erode and degrade and just collected lots of old chunks of concrete as emergency repair. And that was our most recent challenge here. Some more shots of what that reach used to look like just 12 short months ago. Did we have a problem? Absolutely. These are more, a few quick shots of what we are dealing with. There's one of Kip's prized manholes at risk. But his infrastructure in that corridor made it possible for us to go after the fee money that we were able to leverage for this project. Now, these two shots at the bottom show the same manhole in 1997 and in 2010. Were there some changes in that channel? I think you can see that there were. And was it putting his infrastructure and our infrastructure at risk? Absolutely. Well, last year, a year from tomorrow, was a landmark event in Woodland Park, just like tomorrow's going to be a landmark event in Woodland Park, but of, of two different natures. Kip and I were sitting upstairs getting ready to call it a day when the rain started. And we got about three and a half to five inches of rain in that 24 hours. And we don't have any official rain gauges in Woodland Park, which kind of puts it, as I said, a disadvantage, because we really don't have any official records. But a lot of us do have rain gauges and, and we rely on our neighbors and friends and other folks to get some data. And so that's a lot of rain, three and a half to five inches. That exceeds our 100-year rainfall event. And the rain was really centered over the Fountain Creek headwaters, and it caused some significant flows in Fountain Creek. The unfortunate thing was, we had just awarded the contract, the Wildcat Construction, to do the improvements on that Rosemont section south of Sheridan Avenue to make improvements to protect Kip's infrastructure, his water and sewer lines. Unfortunately, we didn't get the project in in time. And so we experienced some damage. But I got a couple of videos here I want to compare, I want to show you. These are two videos taken at different times, different dates, you can see them there. This is behind the Safeway store from Aspen Garden Way. There's a concrete drop structure there. Is everybody kind of familiar with where I'm talking about? Well, in July, and you know, when it rains in Woodland Park, and being an engineer and a water resources engineer, I get kind of excited and I go chasing rainstorms. And so took this video of the, the rain. Notice this drop structure here, the water, there's a notch in the middle, see the water coming over? It's working, things are flowing nice. Good example. Little did I know that a little more than a month later, on the 22nd August, this is what, oop, I need to go back. That's what that same structure looked like after that three and a half to five inches of rain. That structure's up in here. That's a lot of water flowing down Fountain Creek. It caused some damage, and now Kip's going to talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, Bill. I don't know what your guys' definition of a creek is, but that doesn't look like a creek to me. It looks like a raging river. This location here is the same, it's the same spot looking upstream and downstream. The picture on the left is looking downstream, the picture on the right is looking upstream. And I'm pointing this out because we had a lot of destruction done here. And the next slide's going to show you where that is in Fountain Creek. So the upper left-hand corner, where the arrow points, is where the damage is. Down here is where Safeway is. So this is just north of Safeway, right before where the main stem and the east fork come together. In this area, we have a number of utilities, and we're going to go through those. But the picture on the bottom is at that same location of the two previous pictures. It's our gravity sanitary sewer main line that serves basically the south and east side of town, almost half of our town. About 75 feet of it was washed away, and what you see there is the temporary line that was in place. Now, during that event, we had to actually put this line into place twice because of the amount of water that came through, that area kept getting wider and wider and wider. And we just would literally fix it. More rain would come, it would wash off more clay tile, because as the banks fell in, the clay tile pipe would crash in. And we just kept having to fix it. And that, that evening, Bill was literally upstream that night telling us when the water was rising, when we'd have to get out, because we were in, in the creek channel. Also, on the right-hand side in the next picture, you'll see a, a manhole is washed away. Right there, you see, on the picture on the left, you see the lid. We'd never found the base of that manhole. And then the picture on the right is actually the location where the manhole was, where we're putting two mains back together. So, and you can see how far down the banks are. That was just a small creek channel that just got really wide really fast.
Kip, is part of the issue the clay pipe?
The clay pipe operates fine, but when it's, when, when the bank erodes away, there are only five-foot sections, so they keep dropping off into the creek. This was probably, it's probably one of the largest bills we've had to report to the state during this timeframe. I couldn't even tell you the amount of sewage that we lost. Moving on to the east fork, this is, these two pictures where it circled, on the left-hand side is the sanitary sewer force main. So this is the line that is basically pumping, it comes from our lift station on the south side of town that's pumped up over towards the divide and down towards the wastewater treatment plant. You can see on the picture on the left where it was exposed, the picture on the right is actually in the, in the channel of the east fork. And that, right there where they're standing doing some work, you can see there's a concrete pile, the pipe bends, it blew apart there during the storm. So, and we had nothing really to support that bend, as you see, because all the material was washed away behind it. Also, up on the east fork, there was a 10-inch water main, which is pointed at the blue pipe. And also with the, above the blue pipe was the concrete sewer line encasement, was actually a service line to the Eagle Fire Lodge. That was okay, but you can see how much eroded during that one storm. Also in here, what you can't see about right in here, the, the force main was also exposed right at the surface, and we had to build that all back up just to make sure we could still provide services. Also, with the force main being shut down in the rain event, the south side lift station was flooded pretty severely. During that, that one day, we spent about 15,000 in materials and labor. Crews worked continuously for about 36 hours. All city crews worked on that. It was all hands on deck, and we, and our on-call operator was also working. After about 36 hours, we... After about 36 hours, we had to start sending people home, we were just too tired, and called in the on-call operator. Now, pass it over to Bill.
Well, not to say we were smart or anything, but we knew that was going to happen. We knew that would happen in that reach, it was just a matter of time. And that's why we were able to go after a FEMA pre-disaster hazard mitigation grant because of all of Kip's infrastructure in there gave us a great cost benefit ratio and allowed us to get the project to address the main stem issues that we knew were inevitably going to happen. Unfortunately, they happened before we got the project in place, but we had just awarded the contract and we're just getting started. So, timing is everything, but it could have been worse, we did okay. So back in 2009, we applied for a FEMA grant, and we were awarded a $2.1 million grant. It did have a cost share of 500,000, of that 2.1 million, 500,000 was the match from the city. It's done, the project's done, we're going to look at that in a minute, but the design was done by Ayers and Associates, 217,000, and then the construction was awarded to Wildcat Construction at 1.3 million. We had a very innovative project in there that we'll talk a little bit more about here in just a moment, but we got it in, we got it built, and it's working. On the east fork, we had worked with CDOT, and CDOT cost shared $250,000 for that project. We had started the design a year before, and it had just started construction prior to that flood event in August, and I'm happy to say that that one is done and completed now also. And that was designed by our in-house or on-call consultant, URS, and the construction was done by Purgatory Valley Construction out of Trinidad at 730,000. So this was the project that Ayers Associates designed for the main stem. We turned what was a growing canyon and a real eyesore into a linear park with a trail. We contained all of that, that water into a single box culvert through some innovative hydraulics. As a water resources guy, it's never my first choice to put things into a culvert, never, but we had such constraint right away there, we didn't have a lot of options, we looked at open channels, but they were, the sides would have been too steep, too deep, and so we really kind of made lemonade out of lemons here, put it into a box culvert. Down here after the bend, that's where Kip's infrastructure manhole was that washed away. We go around that bend, we replace that manhole, we expand the flow and dissipate the energy, and then it flows out here into somewhat of a stilling basin. And I've got up here in this top corner a quick picture of the cutoff wall, those are 40-foot sheet piles that we put into the ground. There's his brand-new manhole going in and when it was finished. So here's some before and after shots, remember that shot looking downstream Sheridan Avenue? That's what it used to look like, that's what it looks like yesterday.
Wow.
Okay, we have a nice trail there, we've got grass coming in, the arrows point to the same tree, you can use those for reference. If you flip around and turn around, remember that shot, you've seen it three times now? There's that, we tied into that, that box culvert, transitioned to a single box culvert, and that's what that area looks like, and there's that shed, I circled around that same shed that's still there. So we made some improvements, absolutely. And this is it working today. This is flow coming out of the main stem, out of the new box culvert after it goes through some energy dissipation, you can see how tranquil the water's coming out of there. This was a significant flow event earlier this summer, there's the east fork project combining together, they'll cross over that cutoff wall, remember those are 40-foot sheet piles in the ground, and down into the Safeway, the reach behind Safeway. So we've improved and stabilized that section and now have a nice amenity in our community. Kip, back to you.
All right, thank you. So since August 22nd, 2013, we've estimated about five to seven rain events since then. That's after the culvert's been put into place. In between that event and at the time the culvert was in place, we've had a couple events where we had to respond because once that was blown apart during that event and before the channel or before the culvert was in, we had to do some minor repairs in there on smaller events, but since then, we've had, since the culvert's been in, we approximate five to seven significant events, that's five to seven spills that we haven't had to report to the state. That is around $4,500 to repair that each time, so if you do the math, you're looking at around $22,000 to $31,000 saved just because of the project. And not to mention, during this whole time, no one was ever without any service, everybody was always in service. So it's been a great benefit just as it's been in place one year after, so.
Are we done? Absolutely not. We've got, we continue to work our ways downstream, our next challenge is the Safeway reach here, the reach behind Safeway. We've already done a stability analysis, and we know what the issues are, we know the order of magnitude of the fixes, and we hope to begin design on that stretch this next year, 2015, and then keep it moving downstream, we've got the Saddle Club reach down there. So we realize we've got some more things to do, and over time, and I'm not going to read these over, but these are some of the lessons learned that I know since David was a public works director and myself and working here in the Fountain Creek watershed since 1995, we've learned, and we apply these each and every day. And we think it's important that we take responsibility, or otherwise we'll be held responsible, and that's why we've been proactive on all of our managements here, and with flood, with storm water, you financed updating our drainage criteria manual, you financed a drainage, a citywide drainage master plan, all of those are things to be proactive and taking responsibility. And Kip and I say thank you. Sorry, David, we took a little longer, but you know we're enthusiastic about this.
I know. And before we turn it over to council for questions, I felt it was important for Kip and Bill to share with you the outcome of these projects because they're out of sight and out of mind now, they're covered up, you don't see them unless you're downstream and behind Safeway. So it's important for you to realize that we avoided significant problems by expending some money to make those improvements. Have we got more to do? You heard the answer, it's yes. We're also, now, there's a stormwater regional task force, Colorado Springs, El Paso County, Green Mountain Falls, and they're asking, why aren't we involved? And I think the answer is because we're taking care of our own, we're being responsible upstream neighbors, we have the most stringent detention requirements within the region. We had foresight 20, 30 years ago to set aside funding for these types of projects, and we're able to execute them. I felt it was important for you to see it from the engineer's eyes on the benefits of the monies that we expended. Questions for these folks?
Sure, Ken.
Well, I just have to say how impressed I am, and, you know, over the years, you hear about a project or doing this or that, but seeing the photography and the videos that you put together is very impressive, to really understand the magnitude of what you were dealing with, it's just unbelievable. I mean, I've been here almost 30 years, and I just, you know, I haven't seen all that. It's impressive.
Thank you.
Good job.
Well, thank you. And I can confirm, on the 22nd of August, I bumped into these two gentlemen at that curve as everything was falling apart, and I left them to their business, and, but I'm an engineer too, not a hydrologist, but I knew our town was being devastated by that storm, and I just wanted to see what the effects were. And I'm glad to see that we've come up with a solution, and certainly, I also appreciated the articles in the paper last week where you met with the folks downstream who thought maybe we were responsible for some of the water and flooding they were getting, and it was very nice that you could show them that stretch of the creek where it really spreads out, the water disappeared right there, none of our water even reached them. And so I thought that was, that was a good response, us also, that our standards are high enough that we're responsible, we take our responsibilities seriously about the downstream effects of what we have, so I appreciate that point of view from the city. Thank you.
Just for clarification, I didn't meet with those folks, I met with Pat Hill from the Courier with them, and we were able to still communicate the message. But one of the points is, is we are, we're responsible for controlling flow rate, not volume, and I will acknowledge that we do increase volume, there's no question, but we don't exceed what we're allowed to by law, and we're still very responsible with what we do.
Well, the question is, as we continue the work, how do you anticipate paying for it? Are we going to be eligible for another FEMA grant, or is this something that we're going to have to consider in budget negotiations this year and next?
I don't believe we will because the cost benefit ratios aren't there. I think it's a problem that we need to step up to and acknowledge, and we need to fund ourselves. That's why we're getting our arms around the magnitude of the problem, what are the issues, getting the designs done, and moving forward.
And council will recall in one of our work sessions perhaps a year or so ago, we dedicated about $200,000 for two years for design work, and then, and then looking into the future, a certain amount for construction, that will be the source of funding. The vast majority of that will come from the 410 fund, the other source of funding for that will be the revenue that's generated from drainage capital fees and monthly user fees for drainage.
At what point do we share that cost with the county?
These reaches are all on, are in the city, are on city property. The county certainly has many challenges of their own that they're dealing with downstream of Aspen Garden Way, and so I think we're each trying to tackle our problems individually, but we are working together. I'm weekly talking to their staff on, on the drainage issues because we all know this year's been extraordinarily rainy, some of those storms have been significant, we had a lot of damage down by Walmart that you're going to hear about here in just a moment that we've had to repair, and the county's had their own challenges, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill and Kip.
Yeah, absolutely, and for myself, total novice in terms of wastewater, storm water, water, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to work with the two of you and trying to educate myself so I can help the community understand exactly what's going on. Just a tremendous job, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have a quick question, Bill.
Sir.
And you made me think of it, Mayor, because your business is right there, that, I think we talked about this a couple council meetings ago, but the washout coming down that road right there next to the Swiss Chalet.
Troll.
Troll Road. You mentioned you had done some, just you were veering the water off, but we'd still have to always clean it up, is there any future?
Are you talking about the slope there, the big slope along Highway 24? Yeah, that's, that's kind of our unique geologic site, we should charge admission to go see that, because being an erosion control guy, it's pretty cool. What we've done there, I mean, we looked, and David looked at it, we looked hard at erosion control on that slope. It's a very expensive proposition, I mean, it's CDOT right-of-way, it's not our property, but it would be in excess of a million, million and a half dollars to try to do erosion control there. So what we did a few years ago is we decided, okay, we're going to do sediment control, and so we managed the sediment, so that's why we put the block wall there a few years ago, and then some of the rocks, and we managed the sediment. We know, we recognize, we've got to go in there and clean it out periodically, which we've been doing a couple times this summer, but it's easier and less expensive to deal with the sediment than the whole erosion control problem. Some of the big storms spill some sediment out onto the sidewalks, and we clean it up in the road, but it's much, much better than it was, and it was a conscious decision to, rather than try to address the erosion itself, cover the slope, vegetate it, and stop the erosion from happening, it was just easier to deal with the sediment, and it's worked well. I mean, we'd only have to clean it periodically, maybe once a year, and then we truck the sediment off, and we get to enjoy that geologic anomaly we have in our town.
I just want to make sure people can get to the Swiss Chalet.
Oh, absolutely. So actually, in the, one of the last storms, it was the hail that was an issue, not the sediment, so, and, but.
Thank you.
Sir.
We have a similar problem north of town with Sunnywood, which is responsible, you know, the county's responsible for, washing down onto 67 North, they send their crew out, pick up all the mud and move it away. That helps to distinguish though between cleanup and control of damaging of facilities and things like that, because in the winter, we have plenty of precipitation, and we deliberately put tons of dirt on the road, and then in the spring, we come and sweep it all up. So we do have a lot of cleanup with precipitation, we seem to distinguish though between the summer precipitation and the winter precipitation, and if it doesn't damage properties, or it's something that we can handle, manage cleaning up both, cleaning up in both situations, at least that's kind of my view on, on how you determine best cost benefit.
And north on 67, most of that cleanup work right there by Sunnywood is done by CDOT.
Yeah.
They come in and clean it.
Oh, CDOT does.
And we've been in discussions with them, I've had their engineering staff out as we strategically planned for improvements on 67, and the needs for drainage out there on 67, they're going to be a long time coming because quite frankly, there's not a lot of traffic out there, that project is not going to rate real high on CDOT, but, but we're working through that. David and I were talking about that just this week, and with our representative on the sta, on the state stack, Commissioner Steen, about the importance of that. And so that will come in time, but in the meantime, you're right, we've got to do the cleanup and deal with it, and make improvements, small ones as we can, we extended a culvert there last year, working in partnership with CDOT to help solve our drainage problems and reduce their maintenance.
Thanks, Bill, thank you, Kip, very much. Well, let's move on, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Cindy?
Thank you, there are four items tonight, the minutes of August 7th and August 12th, the July statement of expenditures, and as we reminded you at our last meeting, the ratification of a contract with Wildcat Construction to provide emergency bank stabilization work at Fountain Creek, and the contract amount is 109,65572. What questions may we answer?
I note that we do have minutes now for this special meeting, earlier this year, we had several other special meetings which were recorded, but I don't recall ever having seen any minutes for them.
Working on them.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Brabetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business, so we will move on to consider ordinance number 1220, and Lisa, welcome.
Welcome to you as well, here, Lisa. And council, good evening. This is a request on initial posting for our applicant, Mr. Tom Lachina. He is an owner of, the owner of Lachina Automotive, which is a vehicle and automotive repair use in Central Business District located at 115 South Park Street, and he desires to add an 800-square-foot, one-day addition to accommodate his service, his existing service, and because this use is in the Central Business District, we have to take him through the conditional use permit process. So that's what this request is about, and this did go to planning commission last Thursday evening, and they did recommend approval unanimously, and we've looked at it in accordance with conditional use permit standards as well as the Central Business District, and staff at this time is just recommending approval of ordinance 1220 on initial posting and to set the public hearing for September 4th, 2014. I didn't want to go into great detail, I will at the next, at the public hearing, but if you do have any questions, I can answer them. Yes?
Have you had any initial feedback from neighbors?
We did have, one, a feedback via email as well as a phone conversation, I believe he talked to Sally Riley, Kelly Rodomel, gave us an email, I did attach that to your packet, those were the concerns that he expressed. Basically, he is concerned with the parking along the west side of Park Street and the effects of, of this use on that. And I'll go into that. And I'll go into that a little bit more detail during the public hearing as well.
Anybody else? Gosh, we need a motion?
I'll move to approve Ordinance Number 1220 on initial posting and set the public hearing for September 4th, 2014.
Second? Ken Matthews?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on next to public hearings. And before I do that, I have to make this announcement that council members do use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during these public hearings. David, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is the evening for the public hearing as it relates to Ordinance 1219 to place on the November 4th ballot a question to the citizenry to allow the city to go into debt for the purposes of building a facility that would include an aquatic center and the associated infrastructure. Council received a corrected version of the ordinance as it related to a couple of the dollar figures. I would like to provide those for the record. The question should read, "Shall the City of Woodland Park debt be increased by an amount not to exceed 10.1 million, with the maximum repayment cost not to exceed 15.7 million?" The version that you saw in the initial posting was 10.1 for the debt with a maximum repayment of 15.4. I changed the 15.4 to 15.7 simply because, recall, that the buffer that we wanted to have for the increase in potential interest rates for 15.4, that was about a 0.8 percent increase. By taking it to 15.7, it allows a full percent increase in the interest rate. I felt that was more justifiable and also gave us just a bit more flexibility in case interest rates don't perform the way they want them to. So the debt doesn't increase, the maximum repayment could increase should the interest rates go as high as 1 percent more than what they are now. You had presentations last time from our financial advisor, Jim Munir, and our bond counsel, Mario Trimble. We had a good presentation then. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And upon completion of the public hearing, I would recommend that you allow us to put this on the November 4th ballot. What questions may I answer for you this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, in preparation for doing the concept design, and then should we have a successful vote in November, continuation with the final design, I expressed my concern in your office about the funds being available before the bonds come through in order to start that final design process. And you confirmed that that was the intent, that we would start the final design. And is there anything in this that needs to be changed to allow that? Do you have sufficient funds in order to do that in advance of the bonds for bond funding becoming available?
I think that will be the case. We think that we're going to finish the year with an extremely strong reserve, which will give us cash ability for the bonds, or perhaps for the COPs, for the park, for the fleet maintenance. I'm not sure where the best place to place that cash is at this time. But certainly, the council will have the ability to use those reserve funds in that fashion if that's what they choose to do. By the time we get to that point, I will have a full recommendation to you. We've begun the budget process now. We'll be able to better understand what the reserves are and what the best use of those reserves might be.
David, refresh my memory. How long does it take to get bonded typically?
It would take several months for that to occur. But again, the point is, the next step in the process for the Aquatic Center is to move forward with design. Design is incorporated in here, but the cash ability, we could certainly generate a contract that would allow us to spend some cash and then finish the project with the proceeds from the bond.
I just think it's important, as we move towards November, every opportunity we have, like tonight, that we remind the public and, you know, what we're doing here, the people here, and then ones maybe online, that it's not, we're talking about a bond, but it's not new taxes, it's existing funds from the city, correct?
That's absolutely right, and that's included in the bond language. And I should have pointed that out as part of the introduction.
I mean, I know we know that, but I just think we can't say it enough, because a lot of people see, oh, we're going to pay for a bond, you know, and that's been turned down before.
That is correct. And within the language, it says without any increase in taxes.
Correct.
It would be paid for with the existing revenue streams. That's correct.
Thank you.
If I can reinforce, so the point that Councilman Carlson made is that we made that calculated risk or decision to know that we would expend money for the design even if the initiative did not pass. So it's something that we accepted, and there really is no pulling back on that. We will have to expend the money for a design whether the bond initiative passes or not.
I think we're talking two different designs. What you decided to expend monies on was the concept design, which is going to be about 35,000. But what Councilmember Carlson is talking about is the full design that would lead to construction drawings, which will be significantly more. So the commitment that you made was for this initial concept design to have a product to show the community so they have an idea of what they're going to vote for in November.
Thanks for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it appropriate at this time to allow the city attorney to remind the council as well as the public about our restrictions once this initiative is placed on the ballot?
Absolutely. If we could do that after all the questions are asked, I'd be happy to do that.
I was to play a little devil's advocate here, too. Although it's not going to be an increase in tax, you've got to recognize the fact that we're expending funds from the existing revenue stream, which may prohibit us from doing other projects, obviously. And that's the thing we have to look at when we go downstream. So it's not like money growing off of trees here and falling down. You know, there's a hit in other areas as we do this.
And it's funny that you would say downstream after the presentation we just had from Bill, because it will impact our ability to fund those kinds of projects, which are a necessity in my mind.
The vast majority of the funding for the Aquatic Center will be from the general fund, which is separate from the funding that we will take for some of the drainage projects. It will have an impact on that ability, I will tell you. It will be minimal, because we've already incorporated the concept of creating this stormwater master plan and the idea of doing improvements into the future. The types of projects that would have a greater impact on could be things such as a cover for the hockey rink, cover for the tennis courts, new baseball fields at Meadowwood Sports Complex. The council gets to help us make those decisions. The council makes those decisions. When we do our goals and objectives, your top three projects were the fleet maintenance, the park, and the Aquatic Center. So we're fulfilling that. But you're absolutely right, that it does have an impact on future projects. But I'll tell you, your city staff knows exactly where every single penny comes from, and we're extremely respectful of that. We know it doesn't grow on trees.
Speaking, in a sense, from the perspective of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors, one of the lessons we learned from the previous attempt in 2010 was, one, no new taxes. And I think we've gotten to that point where it's possible to do that without new taxes. And the second one was, we didn't want to bite off too much. We thought we would do, in a sense, a phased approach, and lots of cities do that. They'll build the recreations, the gymnasium first, and then they'll add an aquatic center on downstream. And so that was deliberate on our part to just go with that initial piece. The language that you use in here, it says, you're saying is to, that we would "Design acquisition, construction, and equipping of a city building to house at minimum aquatic facilities and all infrastructure associated." I foresee that once, if this gets passed, and then we find out where all the grants are coming from, from the state, we certainly, from the board's perspective, are going to go after lots of private grants. El Pomar, for instance, has provided $100,000 to the construction of the Aquatic Center up in Winter Park or Fraser Valley. And that's way beyond this area, where they got their wealth from. So we're very optimistic that we can get grants to help defray some of the costs of this facility. And so we anticipate that, from various sources, whether it's economic development grants or impact grants and that sort of thing. And perhaps Brian could explain more on what the city's plans are with regard to finding these other resources. That at some point, the council could, within the constraints provided by these dollars, without having to exceed these limits, could, in fact, if that was one of their priorities, as opposed to covers on tennis courts, build a gymnasium extension to this. But I just wanted to let everybody know that this language gives, when we're talking about a building to include at a minimum the Aquatic Center, that implies that at a maximum, that building could include other things. But that, of course, is downstream, depending on the resources that are available, and up to council whether they want to spend the money that way. So I just wanted to clear with that language there. Thank you.
I just want to caution here that you're putting this as a proposal, bond issue to the taxpayer, and I don't want to confuse them any more than they are right now. And if you're going to suggest the fact that you're going to have a gymnasium and all that stuff in there, there are some people not going to be very happy with that. So I wouldn't even say that. I wouldn't, well, you've already said it, but I wouldn't. I wouldn't, unless you want to kill your proposal, I wouldn't.
But, you know, facts are facts, but the reality is, is this is focusing on the aquatics.
And I think I would focus on that.
Well, that's what the language says, but it does have flexibility for later on. But I agree. I think this is what we need to focus on.
David, can you remind us again what the cost of operating an aquatic center would be and whether or not there would be a profit in running an aquatic center or a deficit?
It would be a deficit. I do not believe that there are any aquatic centers that are publicly held in the state of Colorado, probably throughout the country, that make money. The study that the Woodland Aquatic Project did utilizing Ballard and King suggested that the subsidy, the annual subsidy for the city to operate, would be about $98,000. I've rolled that into the pro forma, if you will.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll clarify that further. The study shows that we would recover 81 percent. Typical cities could recover in the 60 to 80 percent. So we're ahead of most cities, according to at least their study. I think what's unique is that up here, we have really nothing else. We don't have a lot of other amenities that cities do. And so that helped with the recovery percentage, at least the number of potential members that would use the facility. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, Mayor, I think now would be an appropriate time to have Aaron review those rules, and then after the public hearing, you can take your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for that question. And thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to advise you and remind you of what the restrictions are on the city and council as well, once you pass this Ordinance 1219 on second reading. So they kick in tonight, if and when you pass this. So the do's and the don'ts of what the city can and can't do with respect to this ballot question. The city may not expend any public monies from any source or make any contributions to urge electors to vote in favor of the ballot question. And the single exception to that is that the city council could pass a resolution in favor of the ballot question. Going back to what else the city cannot do, the term contribution is defined broadly under state law. And it includes the use of paid staff time and other city resources to conduct activities such as preparing or disseminating press releases advocating for the ballot question. So you can't make contributions, you can't expend funds, and contribution is defined very broadly. What you may do, again, you may, city council may pass a resolution in favor of the ballot question. You may have your staff respond to unsolicited questions, distribute a neutral fact summary. You, as elected officials, can express your personal opinions. And you can use your own personal time and your own personal finances to campaign in favor of the ballot question. Does that answer the question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion before we have public comment? Okay, then we'll move forward. Public hearing. Does anybody have any comment from our audience today? Any other discussion? If not, just call for a motion. And I'm going to ask Bob. I know we had a discussion earlier, and Bob graciously said that maybe I should make this motion, because we had some dealings, certainly in 2010. But I was by no means, or we were by no means, the ones that started this. This project has been talked about for the last 20 years, if not longer. We had some dealings right in the middle of it, and hopefully, we brought it a little bit closer to reality. But Bob, I think, under your leadership and the Woodland Aquatic Project, you're the ones that have got it to where we are today. So I think it's appropriate that you make this motion today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can second it then. Anyway, I make the motion to place the question on Ordinance Number 219 on the ballot for November 4th, 2014.
1219.
No, 1219, sorry, about, on the November 4th, 2014, Teller County General Election Ballot to approve a bond for the construction of an aquatic center and associated infrastructure.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Comment? Tomorrow morning, we kick off our campaign with a booth on the, with the Site Pro Challenge, USA Pro Challenge. So we being the board. So I will exercise my right as an individual to do that. Thank you.
And much appreciated. I just have a couple things. One, congratulations to all of us, but Bob and Steve and Nancy who are here today and the rest of your committee. Although at times, maybe trying to move a little bit too quickly, we're here finally, and unanimous from this council. That being said, and I think you all will agree, this is not so cut and dried when it comes to the vote. My advice would be simple. I think that there needs some funds to be raised. I think that we need a strong public relations campaign, because if this doesn't pass in November, we're not going to be talking about this issue for possibly years to come. So we've come a long way. We've got a long way to go. It's 90 days away, and you have a lot of work to do. And I think most people would agree with that. And that's all we can say tonight. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to Consider Ordinance Number 1196. And Sally, welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, council. Our applicant for 1196, the Teller County Waste Conditional Use Permit, Special Use Permit and Site Plan Review, has asked for a tabling to August 16th, October 16th. And they are working through mitigating issues on County Road. and Site Plan Review, has asked for a tabling to August 16th, October 16th, and they are working through mitigating issues on County Road 231. So if you could please vote to table this to October 16th, that will give them ample time to come to resolution, and we'll hold the hearing that evening.
Bob?
Yeah. Is this proceeding amicably, or, because I could read a lot into this, I mean, the county can't win in court, and they're going to take out this other way.
No, this is a technical issue at this point.
Well, technically, they've been using that road for decades for these trucks, and it has not caused any damage.
So it's important that we reserve the questions and discussion of this issue for the public hearing, but thank you.
Point made.
Is there a limit, how many times we can table?
That's what I was going to ask.
There is no.
Okay.
That's the case, and we need a motion to table.
I'll move for a motion to consider tabling ordinance 1196 to October 16th, 2014, as presented.
I'll second it. Thank you, Mo.
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Upstate.
Can I?
No.
And no.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. I see Ms. Leclerc coming up. We're at new business.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, City Council. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the exciting topic of records and retention. This year, the City Clerk's Office formed a Records and Retention Committee, and we have been meeting, and we have a representative from each department on our committee. As part of our goals for the committee, we are moving towards an electronic records management system, where we will be putting all of our records electronically, where the public could access them themselves, and the staff can easily get to them as well. We will be getting the first stage, pardon me, the first phase of this will be implemented on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. The Laser Fuchsia Company is installing the software that we will be using. As part of this, in the committee that we met with, we have come to you tonight because we would like for you to approve Resolution 779, which would allow us to adopt the Colorado Municipal Records Retention Schedule. The Colorado Records Retention Schedule was created in the year 2003, and it was created by the State Archivist's Office and a group of about six to eight municipal clerks. We have been using this as our guideline anyhow, but we would like to officially adopt it so we can move forward. Do you have any questions for me about this?
How much is it going to cost us?
Which part?
Moving the records to be accessible.
Well, you, as you recall, you approved that in the budget, and the software that we are purchasing is $22,000, and that's for installation and scanners and all of the equipment training. That includes training and different things that we'll need to complete that process.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, I would recommend that you approve this. Thank you.
Questions? Motion?
Go ahead. Go ahead and make a motion. A motion for Resolution Number 779, Series 2, 2014, a resolution adopting the 2011 addition of the Colorado Municipal Records Retention Schedule.
Thank you. Second.
Quick question, any legal issues with this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I would endorse this and further recommend this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, public comment. And I've got Mr. Kozleski at the top of my list.
Gene Kozleski, 790 Sunrise Circle. I wasn't going to approach council tonight, even though I wanted to, but I've had over a dozen people approach me about what happened nine days ago. And I just have to vent, so I just want you to know what people are talking and thinking about. I was fortunate enough to be able to serve on this council for 12 years, several years, I can't remember how many, as Mayor Protem. And I have to say how disappointed I was that this council did not choose a mayor last nine days ago, whatever it was. The fact that you did not allow the citizens of Woodland Park know how you voted, the only vote that we know of is Mr. Brevettos, okay? That's the only one that we know of for sure. And I think you owed it to the city to know how you voted there, so that at the next election, if they disagreed with you, they could show that disagreement in a ballot. So I think that was very disappointing. The fact that you did not stay here until you determined the person to be the mayor was, again, very disappointing, very sad. Okay, you should not have left, you should not have allowed our city attorney and our city manager to choose the mayor. Okay, that was your job, and you should have stayed here until you could convince one of the other people on this council to vote your way or listen to their arguments and vote their way. But that, the biggest, the biggest hurt or the biggest disappointment has got to be for the mayor, because, Mr. Mayor, you do not have the support of the majority of this council. You have three people supporting you and three didn't support you.
I disagree with you, sir. We all support the new mayor.
I'm talking about what happened.
Do not make that assumption.
Let's see. Anyway, I'm hoping that you'll have the convictions to, of your convictions, to make the decisions that need to be made in the future on this council. There's a lot of things coming up. We saw so many things tonight, and I think you owe it to the citizens to let them know what you think about it and to make those decisions. And so I appreciate your.
Let me ask you a question, then. How do you think we should have broken that tie?
You should have talked. You should have continued to talk and sway somebody else either to vote your way, or you should have listened to their arguments and voted their way. But that decision needed to come from this council, not from a hat. And that's what happened here. And there are people in this community that are very disappointed in what happened. As I say, I wasn't going to say anything. That night when I left here, I was going to write a letter the next day, and I thought, no, it happened. But so many people have come to me as a former councilperson saying, what the heck happened? How did they do that? Why did they do that? Why couldn't they pick someone? And so that's why I'm here tonight.
For the record, it was not a hat, it was a bowl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, sir. Gene, I will say this. I had some of the same concerns that you do, and I've talked to some of the council about that relative to what Mayor Protem Harvey has said. I think we're going to move forward together as one, and I think that's the most important thing. As someone that didn't receive more than 50 percent, I didn't necessarily feel that validation either. But if we all pull together from here, then I think that's all that this city can ask for. And I would recommend that you mention that to those that have those concerns, because after all, nothing matters now about what happened Tuesday. If we're all moving forward together, I think that's the most important thing. Would you agree? Thank you. Any other public comment? We'll move forward to reports, and I get to start with the help of the city manager. Read a couple of things and mention a couple of things that I think are really important. Friday's obviously August 22nd and August 29th, from 7:00 to 1:00, Farmer's Market. Actually, tomorrow's Farmer's Market goes to 3:00, so that everybody knows that. Next, and most important, and we don't have many left, but the USA Cycling Challenge that will be held tomorrow is a huge event for our city. Prior to the time I came here today, I got a chance to watch a little bit of the national news on NBC and saw Colorado Springs today, Garden of the Gods. Literally tomorrow, Woodland Park will be put on the map. The city has done a tremendous job, I don't know that anyone would argue with, the way our city looks right now is as beautiful as I've ever seen it. Granted, we've had some rain and we've had some help, but the work that's been done the last week or so is obvious, and this is going to be a tremendous venue for this event. I would encourage everybody to encourage all their friends, families. Clearly, the schools are out tomorrow. We're going to have a tremendous day, and as good an event that occurs in our city, I'm certainly going to be proud to be part of that, and I'm guessing everybody in this room will attend if they possibly can. So kudos to the city, David, it was just phenomenal, the way, the way everything looks. The biggest thing for me and kind of my approach for the next 18 months at least is to work together, to encourage new people in our community to be part of the process. And the synergy that's been created in putting this particular event together is certainly not unnoticed, and it's, it's a good lead for, for the future. It's just been a great effort on everybody's part, and I'm just thankful to be part of this community for this event. So look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow. It's just going to be fabulous. Saturday, August 30th, Native American Day at the Rocky Mountain Dinosaur Resource Center, from 10:00 to 3:30, Native American dancing, jewelry and crafts. Wolves will be there, and it is free. Thursday, September 4th, the Chamber Lunch and Learn. The title, Exploring the Ten Misconceptions of Grief and Mourning, will be spoken about by Kathy Sparons. Call the Chamber for reservations. This is going to be a terrific lunch and learn. Lastly, on the Pro Challenge, let's all be ambassadors tomorrow. We're going to have people literally from all over the world here. It's interesting, a couple of weeks ago, I was in New York, New York City for about two and a half days, saw about 8 million people, and not one person said hello. Hopefully tomorrow, we'll give everybody kind of a Woodland Park welcome, big smile, have a great time. It's going to be a wonderful day. So thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to council. Any council reports? Gary?
I have a couple of things. This is for you, Gene. I thought the process we went through appointing a mayor wasn't really one of our more sterling performances, so I kind of agree with Gene there. Some may view it as somewhat illegitimate. I think in the future, I think we should have more thoughtful process. Our charter says that, you know, when there's a vacancy on the council, we can either have a special election, which costs money, obviously. I prefer special elections, because I believe that the, the public, it's there, you know, it's, they're, these people are representing the public, and I think they need to have a voice, like you mentioned, Gene. Absent that, then, yes, we can appoint it with the six members or seven members we have here. But I'd like to see in the future, if we can get together and come up with a list of criteria which we could fairly evaluate our candidates, because if, if the candidates feel that this is not a fair process, nobody's going to apply. And, you know, I think that's something we've got to look at. I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest to you all that we could sit down at a special meeting in conjunction with, like, objectives meeting or aquatic meeting, I'm not suggesting a separate meeting. Let's consider, for the future councils and future, you know, I hope we don't have another vacancy in the future, but if we do, I think it should be more thoughtful. I think we should come up with a list of criteria, weighted criteria, that each of us could use, so that we're asking these candidates the questions, we're really using, you know, that criteria to establish. And I think if we did that this time, I think we would have ultimately someone who didn't get selected, you know, unfortunately. Nothing against, you know, my friend here, Neil, you know, what's your name, dude? Because I supported him for council when he came here, you know, and all that stuff, so it's not anything that had to do with it. It's just the process I'm looking at. I think we need to make it more fair, because if we don't make it more fair, I wouldn't apply in the future again. I, I think a good way to do it is, let's, let's think about criteria we use, let's, based on that criteria, ask the questions, have a weighted criterion, and you have a nice little form there where you can put figures in there, and you come up with an objective, more of an objective analysis and evaluation of the candidates. That's my suggestion. You can take that.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. I know I already missed my turn, but I would like Erin to weigh in on the fact that we were not capable of doing a special election.
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
Well, we just have to be careful. When you make a statement that we had a choice of doing a special election.
I understood the charter said that we do have a special election.
I know, but we need to clear that up. It does not say that.
Yeah, it does not say that. The charter says that you appoint someone and you must do it by the 30th day, and if you fail to do that, you're forced into a special election.
We can't change that? That's a state requirement?
No, that's your charter.
Can we change that charter to? Of course you can. At least, I'm not saying.
The election.
You have to have a special election each time, we have to make that analysis, you know, because you have to spend money when you do a special election. But I, you know, I would like to see maybe a consideration there. I'm not telling you guys what to do, just say, let's consider it, and let's, let's think about this a little bit. Make it a thoughtful process. We have people who are already upset about it, you know, let's not do that in the future.
Two points, and I, I agree with your concerns and the concerns of the community, but with seven members, if there is one vacancy, you only have six people voting, whether it's for mayor or any one of us, okay? The only way to solve that problem is to change as harder and have eight members. That way, if there's one vote vacant, then you'll have either four or three split, or that's one solution. My problem, my concern, though, is that when we have these selections, we have, we had five candidates for mayor this time. We, and when we've had candidates for vacancies on city council, we've had many. But in the last two elections, not one person has run unopposed. That is the problem, or except in your case where you bravely stood forward and at the last minute was a write-in candidate.
Because I was ticked off because nobody else applied.
And I warned you, my family voted for you.
Thank you.
27 votes you got, three were from. But that, that is also an issue we need to address, and maybe we need to think about this in the near future. We've got 20 months, 20 months or so before the next election, and maybe we can do something about it.
I just think it's got to be a fair process, because if it's not fair, then people are just not going to apply. I mean, if it's, if it's viewed that, if it's viewed that there's going to be politicking going back in back rooms somewhere, you know, with smoke-filled rooms, and people making decisions based on whatever analysis they make, I for one would not apply again. I want to know that the process is fair. I want an equal chance among everybody up there and not have everybody minds made up before we even have a chance to make our presentation. I think that's unfortunate, and I think, I think we need to do something about that.
Well, I want to make a comment on, on the complaint that we didn't sequester the candidates. That was a conscious decision made to allow, because you were going to be voting as any member of the council was, and it would have been unfair to the other candidates had they not been able to hear the same presentations that you did.
I agree.
And that's why we did it. If people think that that was the incorrect way to do it.
Of course, I could have accused myself, too, but then it would have been down to five.
Yeah, you could have.
Cindy, you've, not to go way back, but you've been here longer than anybody.
No.
I don't think this has ever occurred before, has it?
No, we have had one-vote elections and recounts. No, we have had one-vote elections and recounts. We've not had ties.
That's what I thought.
But I just think it's important to come up with some criteria, and rather than giving the perception that we're pulling it out of our rear ends, basically, we need to have a set, so that each of us fairly evaluate this process. So, I mean, that's just only my comment. I've got another thing, I'm off that subject, so. Couple of good things I got to say, if you want. One thing I mentioned to, one of the meetings to Dave, is that we have a lot of volunteers. If it wasn't for the volunteers we had, we wouldn't have the city we have. We've got many, many volunteers, and I mentioned, there's a lot of boards and a lot of committees that are out there, and I mentioned the fact that it wouldn't be nice to have a picture of some of those committees out there to let the public know, let everybody know that these are the people that really make this work. And I don't know what the progress has been on that.
We are working on that.
Okay, because Charlie may even volunteer to take pictures, who knows? Send them around. It's tough to get everybody together, I understand, but I think if we make a vow and have to do that, I think that's, and, you know, if something has got to have to be done on a continual basis, boards change all the time, but I think it would be nice to do out there so the people have an idea, these are the people that are really making it work. Because I know for a fact, like Main Street and Creative Arts, these people put in a lot of effort in to make this happen, and I think we need to recognize them. Another thing about the Creative Arts District, we have an event coming up September 6th, the Steve Barta Jazz Trio, they're Grammy of winners, it's a tremendous group, performing here September 6th, and there's going to be hors d'oeuvres and everything with that. Support your arts district, because, remember I mentioned to you guys, we've got to give people a reason to come downtown? And I look at our arts district as giving us a really heck of a good reason for people to come downtown, if we offer them something to give them that reason. And the arts district is working very hard to create events, to make this happen. Another thing that's coming up, you may hear about in the future, is October is Creative Arts Month nationwide. So, expect to see a lot of events occur during the month of October. So, hopefully, you'll support your Creative Arts District. If you want to know what's going on there, just go on their website. It's the Woodland Park Arts Alliance, Creative Arts District, it's a double thing. So, go on that website and have everything that you want to find out about all the events that are occurring. I think it's also in the city calendar and some of these other things, too.
Where's Steve Barta, is that the cultural center?
Yeah, that's at the cultural center. So, that'd be a nice event. They also have the music series, which is coming up, there's a season ticket for that, if you want to do that, and that's with a dinner, and that's really nice. I think there's a series of about five concerts over the year, and if you want something to do, come downtown. These are talented artists, they're not people that just, you know, started last night. These people have been around a while, and they're very accomplished, so, you know, support your arts district. I think it's important, if you support them, they support us, and I think that's going to help our economic development, and I think if we continue, you know, focusing on that, I think we're going to have a heck of a community.
Thanks, Gary. Carol, I'm sorry, I passed you over.
No, you didn't. No, I have nothing else to say.
Well, I do want to thank Gary for staying here and being so.
I didn't make my decision yet.
You haven't. At least one more meeting, and helping with the vote tonight, but also with all the work that you are doing in the downtown Main Street program and the Creative Arts District. This committee, I mean, this council is, just owes you so much in that regard. Thank you very much.
Nothing?
No.
I think I had a lot to say about the election and future elections, and as the city grows, we're going to run into a lot of ties. I think when more residents get involved, so we might want to look at options of taking away games of chance, I would call that, or randomness. So, I had some ideas, but we can discuss that. I'd like to talk to Aaron about that first, so we'll go that direction. Gary, thank you for everything you do for Main Street and Creative Arts. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Well, let's thank Gary privately for what he does for us. I think it was interesting to read some of the editorials and the newspaper articles after the election or the appointment last week. It's obvious that people are concerned about how Neil now sits as mayor. I think it would be useful for us to have a, what I'll call a lessons learned session, it could be combined with other meetings, as Gary was suggesting, but, yeah, what did we learn from that, and how do we avoid this situation in the future? I don't think it's easy to come up with criteria that we could all agree on as to how we would rank candidates. I, in fact, did prepare a scorecard before the interviews, and I started out scoring on a one-to-five scale, but those responses were how they answered my questions, and no one else's, but I kind of got caught up in all of it, and I quit keeping score. I was one of those who thought he knew who ought to be the next mayor, but I think the process in itself was a good one. I was surprised that we decided or determined just before the meeting started that all candidates are going to be in the room at all times. And it was so short before the meeting started that I really didn't understand what you were saying, Carol, and frankly, I was a little upset about that. I thought we'd agreed how we were going to do it, and now there was what I call a significant change. So, as I said, I think we ought to have a session to kind of replay this and think about how we might do it better or more efficiently in the future, whether it regards a charter change or something else. Yes. That's all I have.
I think that's unanimous, and we will make every effort to discuss this sometime in the near future.
Okay, Aaron?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Two things, very quickly. I'm going to pass out after the meeting's over the packet that is the report to you on the permitted use site plan for Memorial Park. Remember, that was an administrative review, and we owe the council a report on that. We'll get that to you. Lastly, is, we use in City Hall a phone system called Voice Over Internet Protocol. Because it is a computerized system, it has the ability to be hacked, and periodically that happens, and it's happened frequently over the last few days, where someone has hacked into a couple of numbers, pretty important numbers within City Hall, and has made numerous phone calls to folks within the community, basically pretending to be one of our staff. And they're not being very pleasant to these people. One of them is one who can charge them money, and they're making threats, and they're just speaking harshly something that our employees won't do for very long, anyway. So, if you hear of in the community, folks receiving calls from City Hall, because it pops up on their caller ID, cemetery, utility billing, whatever, they have, they've acquired that number. We were working with the police. It's a known system, it's called spoofing, and there are other processes known as spoofing. But if you hear people saying that they've gotten numerous calls from City Hall that are, seem to be inappropriate, have them call back. You know, that's the advice. We're putting this on the internet, we're putting it on our website and Facebook. If people get these kinds of calls, they should immediately call that number back, because it's not us. It's not us making those kinds of calls. Mayor, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you very much. Move on comments on written correspondence? Do we have any?
We don't.
None? Anybody? Do I need a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We don't really. No, you don't. Really don't.
So, you can just hit the.
Just bang the gavel.